I think the EBS.
Sure.
Just one more.
No.
There's a lot.
We're leaving Thursday to visit my daughter for a week, so I'm going to have this Tuesday. My computer hooked me up with a Zoom connection to the EBS. So I can hear everything because it's in the internet carrier. Yeah.
No, no.
It's the problem here. So if there's any votes, I'll come on and do that.
They did. I mean, they did. That's what I, that was my understanding.
They're busy staff.
All right. Thank you.
Who's yours, sir?
Yes.
I'm just waiting for Mike to get back.
Okay. Is Walt coming?
I haven't heard anything from him. Tommy's not coming.
He might think it's, you know what? If I didn't check my email at the last minute, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought it was something. What's up? How you doing?
You all set, Mike?
Am I missing?
No.
Tommy's not coming, he said.
Tommy's not coming?
Like I said.
Mike, you all set?
Yeah.
Ron is calling.
Uh, yeah, let me just check, see if Victor's or upset.
Yeah, he said he was.
He was? Okay, yeah.
Give me one mic there.
It faded, it faded the black, then it came back.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they all set, I guess.
Didn't answer, sorry. Go ahead.
All right. This is revised budget workshop, North Branford Town Council, Tuesday, March 30th, 2021, 6:30. But we don't, Michelle's not here.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Is that all right, Mike?
Is this on, record?
I got it.
Yeah, I think so.
No, it's not on. Don't think anybody pushed the button.
Good?
Yep.
Tuesday, March 30th, 2021, 6:37 PM, North Branford Town Hall, Town Council Chambers. We'll call. Pass that, Mike?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take it. I'll just record who's here.
Okay.
I'll get that in.
All right. Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
One nation, unified, united States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, we have a budget overview for 2021, 2022 operational and capital budget. First, we have the Board of Education. Okay. Superintendent, it's all yours.
Thank you. Firstly, I appreciate the opportunity to come a little bit early before our budget presentation to talk about the software package and the opportunity for the town and the Board of Ed to do a joint acquisition on this. I know there's been a great deal of communication between Martha and Anthony. They've met with the vendor. They've crunched numbers. They've come up with a lot of ideas, but we seem to be at a point right now where there's a couple of things we need to work through and iron out. So Martha has generated a list of things that I think she's going to walk you through this evening, some of the things that separate our needs for the Board of Ed in comparison to the town's needs and how we can kind of bridge the two together and work through. I know you're aware that there was a, a, a cost originally when we looked into this. I think it's a little bit higher now. I think Anthony has some of the numbers, and I believe Anthony, the difference was about 120,000.
120 over five years.
Over five years. So if you're looking at, you know, that difference in about 24,000 a year, with the Board of Ed having over 300 employees and working with the state of Ed for a lot of things that we have to do, and Martha will speak to that, that would be something that the Board of Ed would be willing to absorb that additional cost. So whatever we're into it now, I don't want the difference of 24,000 over five years to be a deal breaker if it truly works for us and it's something that we can work into our budget over the next five years. So I think it's important that you hear that, and then some of the challenges with what we're seeing if we do not have separate databases. That should give us enough time to answer any questions that you may have, and we'll kind of go from there. Okay? Martha, can I turn it over to you?
Hi, everyone. I'm Martha. I don't think I've had the opportunity to meet you all because of COVID and last year we did this remotely. Thank you for inviting us here to discuss the new financial system. The board and the town, I know Anthony, is very excited to begin this new journey with a financial system. Anytime you change a financial system, it's a monumental task, and I've done this before. In addition to financial systems, I've done implementations of time clock systems and attendance systems. So I'm aware of the planning and the detail that's involved in getting a new system up and running. To make sure we had all of the information that we needed to carefully weigh this decision of a shared versus a separate database, I reached out to other districts and asked them for their opinion on the pros and the cons of each, and these are districts that have gone through this same process with Munis. So we're talking about the same financial system. I wanted to approach this in a thoughtful and meticulous manner, so that's why I went ahead and made this list. I'm not going to read through it all. You certainly can see all the different points. I'm just going to highlight a few things. The, a shared database is very complicated, and that is reinforced by several towns that you see listed on the sheet. If a Board of Ed or the town has an issue or a problem under a shared database, that could hold up the other entity, whether it's a support issue, or we need to fix an error, or something goes wrong in a function, that will impact the other entity. And it can also restrict usage. So if there's a problem when we cut an accounts payable check or a payroll check, that problem will spill over to the town because we won't be able to process checks at the same time, whether it's an accounts payable or a payroll check. The distance between us is also a factor, and that was noted in Bloom Shapiro's report. We are actually five miles apart, or approximately 10 to 15 minutes. And although that doesn't sound like a far distance, when we're working under time constraints such as payroll or trying to get an ACH through, that's a long distance when we have to communicate between both of us if we have a shared, shared system. There was mention that, you know, the, the main reason we didn't want a shared database was snooping, and that's not the case. It's actually, there's a lot of privacy issues that we need to make sure we understand. There's sensitive and confidential information in both payroll and our accounts payable systems, both at the town and the board. Things such as wage garnishments, tax filings, dependents, social security information, beneficiary information, those things are not public knowledge. In addition, on invoices, I can speak for the board side, you know, we'll have invoices come in from attorneys, which will summarize negotiations or, you know, things that are going on of a confidential and legal ma, confidential and legal. Matter. Sorry. Nature, nature. In addition, we have things such as invoices or even contracts from educational institutions or psychiatric out placements where, you know, the services will be listed and it may name a student's name. Though, that's not public knowledge. Ledger went on to say that even there, there was no way to access, to limit access for payroll information, deductions, tax filings, or wage garnishments, or dockings, or any of that. And even went on to say that the proposed budget information is visible on both sides as a work in progress, even before it's presented to the Board of Education. Another big obstacle we would have to overcome is that both the town and the board have different tax identification numbers. So the Board of Education on their own files separate federal 941s and state 41s, the UC5, which is the unemployment report. We generate our own W2s and 1095Cs, and of course, we file our own OSHA reports. You'll see the comments there from the different towns that it is, it is a complicated, cumbersome process if we were to do it together, but the fact that we have two separate tax ID numbers is an issue in itself. Only one payroll clerk can be in an employee or update at the same, at the same time. And there was a comment made that if it works for Branford, it can work here. Funny thing is, when I reached out to the business manager in Branford, the town of Branford does not use Munis for their HR or payroll responsibilities. Bloom Shapiro noted that there are significant differences in our workflow and processing, and that will further complicate the setup with a shared database. For example, the board pays approximately 411 employees every two weeks. We have a 21 pay for teachers and a lump sum pay for teachers. We pay biweekly for other people. We have hourly pay. We pay stipends, substitute teachers, athletic officials, and we also have state teachers' retirement. The budgeting and accounting is a whole other piece. The biggest thing is that the board has to follow a uniform chart of accounts, and that's identified in the Financial Accounting for Local and State School Systems. It's a book that I actually keep on my desk. And all of the reports that we submit every year to secure, dispense, and account for school funds have to follow this chart of accounts and make sure that we report by fund, object, function, level, building, and description. And you'll see there the way we have to lay out our chart of accounts. It's depicted with the Xs there. Even Bloom Shapiro says that the data and the configuration needs to be uniform if you're doing a shared database, which means that the town would have to convert their chart of accounts to the way we report it. New Canaan actually uses a separate database because their chart of accounts is so different. Under accounts payable processing, there could only be one vendor ID. So if we use WV Mason and you use WV Mason as a vendor, there's no way that we can split apart the invoices or the activity for that specific vendor. Your reports will also be impacted because of the commingling of that data. And when I reached out to Branford, Don Neal also said that Branford has a separate database for vendors and that they are not in the same building as the town and that running accounts payable concurrently with the, with the town is an issue. Looking forward, the board is planning to implement either a time clock system or the integrated timesheet that Munis offers, and this automation will require, will require customized fields and for things to be very set up specifically. The system is capable of journal entries, the Munis system is capable of journal entries between the board and the town, whether they are shared or separate, and that is actually from the Munis rep. And the end product would still be an integrated accounting system that would meet the recommendations in the Bloom Shapiro report. So I think that, you know, separation is the key that will allow both the town and the board to maximize the potential in the system now and in the future, rather than being held back by the limitations of a shared setup.
So Anthony, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know that you have had a great deal of conversation with the vendor, working with Martha. Obviously, you've just heard a great deal of the con aspect of it, so the, the pro aspect, if you want to speak to that, and then how we can get closer if this is going to happen with it working for us. You do recall there was a number of recommendations through that feasibility study, looking at a shared HR person. We've already had conversations about that, what that would look like, and I think that's something that we can accomplish as well. But the first step in this process would be coming up with a platform where we both could have our needs met. So Anthony, even.
Yeah, I'm neither pro nor con, as I mentioned in my memo to you guys last week. I think the bigger picture is a policy decision that needs to be made by the council and Board of Ed as where do you see this thing down the road? The Shapiro talked about a joint finance department. If that's the thing you really want to get to, then it's an easy decision. You've got one database now, because if you do a separate, you're going to pay a cost to combine it down the road. If the shared finance department is a pipe dream, that may never happen in our lifetime, then you have the option. You can go with the one or the two. The only obstacle is the 120 delta over the five-year span. We can live with either. So I'm not either pro nor con either. I just, you know, when I see 120, it kind of rings a bell, but Scott's being generous tonight, so.
Listen, I don't know if it's generous, but I know in a $32 million budget, if you break out $24,000 a year and with over 400 employees, if my business department, my finance department is going to be comfortable, confident, and it's going to ensure that we're not going to have some of these things that are mentioned in this, $24,000 is worth it to us with the size of, you know, our personnel in comparison where we would carry that, that share coin fare.
Right. I mean, obviously, in year one, it's not 24, it's skewed heavily because it's more implementation in the first year and narrows over the remaining four years. But that, that's where I see the, the main decision is to, you know, you've kicked around that idea of a shared finance department for years, and if it's something that you truly have a desire to accomplish, then you go down the path of one. If it's something that it's a nice to have, maybe someday, we build a new town hall in our lifetime, maybe it'll happen 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, is that ever going to happen? Then you kind of, you're kind of left with the one versus two, with the only delta being 120,000, which that's a money issue that needs to be resolved by both agencies together. But I, I'm not a pro or a con. I'm, I'm a, I'm a lover, not a fighter. I can go either way. I'm easy. They'll, they'll both work for us, and, you know, whatever makes everybody happy, I'm, I'm on board with that. Now, my only decision was the, you know, from a policy decision, what do you guys see as the long-term strategy? And if you, if you're abandoning that joint finance department due to the fact we never have a room big enough to have us all in, then it goes back to the one versus two, and the only issue is the money.
Just Mike building a new town hall.
Uh, I'm aware. Might as well. We're building everything else.
Anthony, what, what would the, what would the drawback be to having a joint finance department but having two systems? Like, if we did two systems now?
Right.
Does that rule out doing joint finance down, down the road? Like, in two years, like, could you still? You know what I mean? Could you do?
Yeah, you would stay, you could start out with two, and the option was proposed to Munis, okay, what if we decide to go down the road to one? And they could merge them, but there's a significant cost. The more you get deeper involved, the more history that's in a separate database, the more you have to merge into one down the road.
But do you even have to do that, is what I'm saying? Like, could you just keep it?
If you're playing under one roof, you wouldn't have two different databases going. If, if, if the long-term goal is to have one finance department, if you want to call it that, you'd be on, you'd be playing under one set of rules, so you wouldn't have two going at that point. But again, is that something that's even, even feasible, realistic, or just a nice thought that we talked about, but, you know, is never going to happen?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Sean, sure.
Excuse my appearance, I was at BBL. There are two things I just want to talk about, about the platform. What is not a different platform, it's two different databases.
You have to come up, Shawna, just because it's on TV.
I can't hear anymore. I'm getting old.
Yeah, me too. Sorry about my dress, but fortunately, my mind still works. So it's not two different platforms, so it's, it's different. A platform and a database are two different things. So Munis is the platform, which both the town and the Board of Ed would be on. The databases are the two separate entities. So when we were talking about it, I know a little bit about technology, but, you know, I don't know the ins and outs. One of the things I talked about with Martha that I would think would impact some employees, there are employees that work for both the town and the Board of Ed. If we had a joint database, we would be paying all those employees overtime every time. So we just have to think about that because it looks, it would be under one roof. So we just have to be aware of that. There is accessibility, so one of the reasons we're doing this is for transparency sake. At least, that's one reason for me. I think the town and the board should have more transparency into finances, and the town would be able to have access to the board's database. Now, one thing that Martha said, and I would like to dig a little deeper in because I don't know why Munis would say that, but it certainly can be coded, that certain positions should be able to have different privileges than others. So that's something that I would like to dig in deeper with Munis. There's absolutely no reason that everybody should have payroll privileges. So we could double-check on that, but ideally, what I'm thinking, and I know, you know, it's a dollar thing, but I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish, so we're set up, we run into a payroll bump, and we can't run payroll. That is a nightmare for people who are expecting a check, and many of our employees live paycheck to paycheck, so we don't want to run into that, that kind of a roadblock. But i- if we could figure out how to run them both, and if down the line we need to merge, merging two databases is not that big of an issue, especially because it's on the same platform. Now, if we were trying to merge two different platforms, we would have a much more difficult issue. Merging two flat platforms, not a big deal. Yes, the, it would, as we get bigger and bigger, right, it, it's going to be more cumbersome, and maybe, I don't know what the cost could be, but we can throw it out there and ask. I mean, it's definitely worth the ask. At this point, I would support the two different databases with access so that town employees and board employees can work collaboratively on certain functions. And as we begin to build those functions and let them kind of evolve, we will see what the capabilities can do. It's just not realistic right now to think we're going to have a joint finance department because every time I hear that, people want to be under one roof, which also baffles me because the world of technology does not limit us anymore, but for whatever reason, finance thinks they have to be under one roof. I'm not of that school of thought, but I also work for a very large company, so we're not. But, but those are my two cents on this, and if there's any homework you want me to do personally on this, I'm happy to do it, just throw me an email. Thank you.
Thank you.
So does the council have any questions specifically to Martha or Anthony? I hope this was helpful. I don't know where you're at with, with this in the process, or?
I have one question, to the points that were just raised. These are all really great pieces of feedback about concerns and potential issues that could come up. Is there a way we can validate that there's not a workaround or that these towns, what they're reporting back, is a real obstacle or one that can be? Like, in terms of the access, I know, like, at the state, we run CoreCT through the comptroller's office, and every, you know, different people don't have access to everything. So I'm just curious if, if the feedback that these towns are giving, you know, is, can be validated by Munis.
Or, I was going to say, the Munis rep coming in.
Yes, exactly.
Anthony, Martha, you worked with the Munis rep to have, an opportunity to come in and?
We can certainly ask. Sure.
And speak to these points? We certainly could do that.
Well, in reading some of the, because I know Anthony and Martha both sent out to their separate groups to towns if they ran the same database or separate databases, and in going through the responses from Anthony in here, there were some towns that do run one database, and they just said, you know, one doesn't have access, you give rights and privileges to people, and they have, you know, one doesn't necessarily always, everyone doesn't see the other stuff because it's based on rights and privileges, and you can set them up as two entities on the same, you know, it's the same database and it's the same platform, one database. So I think there are a number of questions that we do need to, because towns that have run it, it seems to be contradicting some of the stuff that Munis has said, based on just in reading the email responses. And, and maybe they have more knowledge as to how they, the workarounds, as you called it, and so, you know, that's something I think that we need to look in just to assess on, on the whole process here, because it seems like some towns have done that and have done it successfully.
So maybe with our, the communication committees between the two, we could have the Munis rep come and have your two reps, our two reps. We don't have, we don't need to have both council and board, and just have a breakout session, get the information, you could report back, and then we report back. That's probably the easiest way to do it.
It probably is, yeah.
If you were in agreement with that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sound like a plan? Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions from anybody? Anybody in the audience want to say anything? Okay. Well, let's move on then. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us for that.
Okay, Scott, whenever.
You're going to just relocate Michael and?
Yeah, all right. Take your time.
Jason, tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. I, I know we are on a tight timeline. I think that, obviously, going through last year's, we were, you know, we did this virtually, but it's really streamlined from years past, and we're going to go through a brief PowerPoint. I'm not going to read every slide to you. You have a paper copy, I believe, in front of you? You should have, okay? And over the next several days, if you have additional questions, if you want to get them to Michael or to me directly, if anything that, you know, we can help you with, we certainly will. That being said, obviously, everything that is done through the budget process is built around our philosophy, our vision, our mission statement for the school system, looking to educate the whole child, every child, from pre-K all the way through grade 12 plus our 18 to 21-year-old program. As you are well aware, the town in North Bramford made a huge commitment to the construction of a new high school, which will start in June, and that was an amazing obstacle to overcome with the pandemic and everything that we've been seeing over the last several years for the council and the board to collectively put so much energy and effort into making that into a reality. So I want to personally thank you and I know the board is greatly appreciative as well. So that being said, we have our core beliefs that we always list and we live by these as we build our curriculum and our facilities and the programs that we offer to our children. Moving forward, obviously the past year, the past 12 months has created probably the greatest challenge to public and private education in history. And what we've had to overcome to get our children back to school, into the classroom, to live teaching, was a commitment and effort and I think we did it really well in North Bramford. I think we were out ahead of the curve with closing last March and going to fully remote over a 48-hour period, putting over a thousand computers into the hands of our youngsters and having our teachers work from home remotely, only to prepare for getting our buildings ready for ventilation and everything that we had to do with PPEs to start the school year and then welcome our students back on day one to five-day a week live instruction, which we've been able to do throughout this entire year. So that's, again, it's a shout out to our staff, to our board and to the council for supporting our efforts to do that. Moving forward, our priorities moving forward. We know that we have a new high school that is going to be under construction over the next 36 months, 30 to 36 months, and that's something that we are well aware of and we built this budget knowing that we wanted to be sensitive to that. Some of the things that we look to and we're gonna continue to look through are STEM opportunities for our students in K through 12. All of our programs are modeled around STEM and you'll see that as you dig down into our budget presentation or into any of our curriculum documents. Continue with professional learning, class size always will be one of our highest priorities. Obviously, the deficits that kids are going to be coming back to next year after being out for a year. Many districts are still in a hybrid or in remote. We'll have a pretty good idea when we assess our students over the next six weeks and close out the school year in two months. And then as we really rebuild and reload for next year, looking at the deficits of our students and where we need to get to. So that being said, the second one is probably the most important, the social emotional piece to working with children who have been traumatized by this. This has been a, this has been a real long haul for our students and we need to have the mental health professionals in place to assist. I spoke to the STEM and where we're going with that. We are adding Project Lead the Way, which is our pre-engineering program. We're gonna bring biomedical on. So we are almost at a full curriculum for our engineering program. One of our big initiatives is to get more, more of our female population involved in engineering. So we'll do a great deal of regel there, but having biomedical, I think, will really pay great dividends for us. We're also very interested in over the next several years to look at manufacturing and collaborating with Hurst County Community College and building a partnership with them where our students eventually will be able to earn an associate's degree through prescribed coursework in our high school. That's down the road a ways and that's something that we're trying to be creative with looking at federal and state grants to assist with that. So that's something that we're still, we still have a vision for in the future. The basics of what we're gonna continue to do are pre-K 12 curriculum, instructional practices, STEM again, we mentioned, assessment remediation practices, dealing with the COVID, the pandemic. I've spoken about that, technology, obviously. So the numbers, and this is the important part, and I'm gonna let Martha, but I'll just kind of work through this a little bit. Recognizing the effects of the pandemic, the significance of the new high school building project, the impact of the exploration of the school improvement grant, which was $1.5 million for our middle school, which has now come to its conclusion. Our status quo budget for our district moving forward next year is 1.58%. And Martha will go through the pie chart showing you what that looks like with the lion's share of our budget being salary and benefits. Several positions were funded by the school improvement grant at the middle school and we are looking to transfer three of the positions to the general fund to maintain the current level of curriculum and instruction. One being an instructional coach, which is a model that we believe wholeheartedly in. We've seen the impact of that and we want to continue with our progression of having coaches in our buildings. Two instructional, or one, excuse me, instructional paraprofessional, which is a non-certified position. An inclusion paraprofessional, a non-certified. A life skills teacher necessary due to our increased program enrollment. These are through students' IEPs and we are charged with providing the environment for those students. And what we do is we have them in a self-contained program in each school and because of numbers, we're going to have to add a program. Ms. Deonk, is that in what building?
Jerome Harrison.
Jerome Harrison. So our K2 is where we will add the life skills teacher there. We are also looking to add a stipend for our dean positions at each of the four schools. Our deans are voluntary personnel at this time. We are looking to pay them similar to what a coach would get, a dollar amount similar of $2,000 per person. They are management when the administrators are out of the building. They are hands-on deck and they take the role with a lot of student deportment issues or things that they may have to cover if the administrator is at a meeting in the district, out of the district. So it's just another level that we feel we should compensate these people for what they do. The total of all of these items is $181,522 and that is a 2.14 requested increase from our budget. So that being said, Martha, do you want to pick up here?
Sure.
So we, when we sat down to begin this budget process, we carefully discussed all of the areas of teaching and learning and how possibly the pandemic would affect the students. Of course, we considered the new high school building and the end of the school improvement grant and how that actually would impact our teaching and learning. We also prioritized all our requests and wanted to make sure that we would continue the support programs that we currently had in place. In addition, we looked at all of our expenditure lines, including salaries and benefits, to make sure that they were all as accurate as possible for the estimates for the 21-22 budget. In regard to student enrollment, overall, the student enrollment is projected to decrease by 39 students overall throughout the district. But we will actually have a better idea once we have the kindergarten registrations complete. I think last I heard those kindergarten registrations were going strong.
They are.
Still 105.
Okay. The next page is a chart which actually breaks down the expenditures into different categories such as salary, benefit, learning, learning programs and supports. And for each of those different categories, you'll see the overall change from our current budget and to the proposed budget. The two large increases there, the 20% in learning programs, that's actually all of our instructional areas, so math, science, English, music, curriculum and instruction. And the reason for the big increases are materials that we're buying for math, science and reading. The other large increase under student support, the 22%, is actually an increase due to outside nursing services that we have to have for students' individual educational programs. So where does the budget increase come from? We just laid it out in a different way for you to see where the big increases are and actually there's a very large decrease. So the biggest increase here is in salary, which is kind of expected because the Board of Ed really is a salary, it's an employee organization that provides service. The benefit number actually decreased significantly because what we did was actually looked at all of our employees and calculated out the true employee contribution for their health insurance that they are providing. So I was able to actually decrease the amount that the district had set aside in health insurance so that it actually reflects more accurately what happens each payroll. Looking at it in a pie chart, we broke it down into the same categories and you'll see it's just represented a different way. Salary is the biggest piece, followed by benefits, transportation, buildings and grounds, tuition, and then the smaller areas such as technology and administration. And then by location, we broke it down by individual building and also district. So district is actually made up of the services that extend beyond one building. So things like people services, technology, transportation, benefits, insurance and professional services. This is a chart which summarizes the expenditures by object. So this is one of the, the three-digit number you see all the way over to the left, so 111 for certified salaries. Those are all representative of the object numbers that the district has to follow in compliance with the uniform chart of accounts that I spoke of earlier. And going across, you can see our current budget, what we're proposing in that particular object, the change and the percentage increase. So overall, it is a 2.14% increase over our current budget. And also included is our capital request. This year, it's limited to a very few number of items, actually all at Tuttucket School. A couple of them are in relation to the ventilation and air conditioning project that you started last year and that will actually complete the air conditioning piece of that project. There are some funds there requested for the playground change out for the students at Tuttucket and replacing two oil burners that are actually beyond repair. I believe they're original to the building. So those requests total $102,734 and that actually completes our presentation.
Okay, so I'll start with, I'm focused on capital requests. And so last year during our budget process, we had talked about the unit ventilators that have been ordered and have been in. And they've been here for quite a while and they were going to be, started to be installed in June was the response that we got. And I know that that was delayed a little bit when they got started, but there's quite a few that are still not installed. So to get to, you know, the major cost for, is to hook up the ventilators to air conditioning, but a lot of them aren't in yet. And all of the classrooms I know do have window air conditionings in them. So part of the problem that I see is we allocate money and then the project gets delayed and doesn't get done and, you know, it could be another year or two because those unit ventilators, the money was allocated, started to be allocated back in 2018. I believe the first $100,000 and then there was another $50,000 the following year and then it was delayed in ordering and then they've been sitting, waiting to be installed. So to allocate money for, to hook up for air conditioning when they're not in just seems a little counterproductive to me right now.
I just want to speak to that. So last year when the pandemic hit in March, obviously, air quality was the highest priority throughout the district. The high school needed 25 air conditioners installed. John Florio is a one-man band with an assistant and had to cut all windows out and put separate units in the first and second floor in every classroom, so it was 25 total. And we lost the summer because of that. So every classroom in the district right now either has central air at Jerome, obviously, middle school is central, but the high school and Tuttucket, we had multiple units go in there as well. So that threw us back. When we decided if we wanted to take those unit ventilators and then add the air conditioning piece, the electrical component came in. Now, we don't have to put air conditioning with those units. John Florio usually takes two to three days to put a unit in. He can do it in two on a good day. I think there's 10 going in to Tuttucket Valley, 10 or 12 harder. Total that up, 10, 12?
10 sounds right, but I'm not positive of that.
Okay, and so, and I think there were two at the high school. So they're stored here, John is gonna get on that full steam and he's going to be doing that. That will be his highest priority, but he was sidelined because of getting the other two buildings right. We had to do that. So we have them, we're ready to go in. If we don't want to add the air conditioning two down, we can leave the window units in, but it's not really effective. When you look at the longevity of that building, we're not going anywhere there. I think it's, you know, it's proven for us to put the air conditioning in. It'll be more efficient and more effective, so.
But over, I guess over time, I mean, if the window air conditioning units are in right now?
They are.
And they're working.
They're small, you have the small ones. So they burn a lot of, a lot of, you know, energy to run those little units in the square footage of a classroom with 24 students in there. Over time, you know, you're spending a lot of money versus, you know, they're gonna be based outside of the building, they're not gonna be rooftop. So you're gonna be running the AC units into those ventilators. They'll be much more efficient, they'll be quieter and they're not gonna be nearly as costly as those small ones. So it's just.
So, I mean, we've been kicking this around for years.
For years, we started funding it and paying for it. We wanted to start it last summer.
So what is a drop dead date you could give us?
I can tell you in June, we will start putting those in. As soon as the kids go, that's John's highest priority.
What's our completion date?
Last year, well, it takes two to three days per unit and he can line them up.
Something we could hold you to.
If I have to help him, Mike, I'll help him put it in, trust me. I don't have many mechanical buildings.
That'll be done by September?
Our goal is to get those in this summer, in the high school too. There were two going to the high school, I think 10 in your building at TBS. And that's what we wanted to do. I couldn't have opened the high school last year without any air conditioning. The biggest thing for COVID was air quality and circulation. And the way we had to do it, we put oversized units in the high school in every single classroom. And it took a day for John to take the glass out, custom foot fit, get the unit in, seal it and, you know, have it functioning. We lost a lot of time over the summer doing that because then we had to do Tuttucket as well.
Can I speak? I'm sorry, you have to come up again.
Yeah, because it's on TV.
Would it be acceptable if we got back to you with a drop dead date of when the installation?
Yeah, you can discuss that.
Is that okay? And then that way it might help make the decision, we can commit to a date to have the project done and then you can decide if it's acceptable to put the air conditioning funding forward.
That's fine.
Because we're, you know, if we don't put the AC in, he's just putting demand, it takes the electrician out, you know.
No, we want to see the air conditioning, we want to see the whole unit, the way it was, you know, basically designed to function, to function, but you know.
Well, they can do both.
Keep on getting delayed and delayed and delayed and it's sitting in the garage and sitting here and sitting there. You know, it's, it makes us look bad along with you guys. Because we bought, we bought the units, we bought the units and they're sitting there.
Well, if we sub that out to put those units in and what they would cost to put in versus John doing it and last summer we lost because of the other two buildings. So, you know, I stand by the time it took him to do that and I know that he's told me he can get those in per unit in two to three days, you know, and we can get back to you and I'll pull him and ask him that.
Okay.
I mean, that's the best we can do.
That's, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah.
But I hate to go through another budget season and see it sitting there.
Listen, we don't want to spend a lot of money on small units and classrooms that, that it's, you know, we're throwing money away.
Right.
We want those in, we definitely want those in.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. If I read articles in the paper now without a school district?
If I read articles in the paper now without our school districts during the budgets, I see a lot of them are getting COVID money. Are you going to get money just for the Board of Ed that you would then be able to use for some of this or no?
Well, we have, we have money coming back to reimburse what we've spent. But this, this is something that, you know, we have the units, they're sitting here. It's just a matter of we need to take our personal.
No, but I mean, is there any other money, like sometimes I'm reading other districts about it, you can put to someone's other priorities or you have to be just reimbursed?
Right. Right, so we do have monies coming back that we can do something like this way.
How much do you anticipate getting back?
We have 288 coming in from Esser.
So we have a remaining of approximately 100,000 now, which should give us a total of 300,000 for reimbursement for materials for this year. Esser's two is approximately 288,000 with the American Rescue Plan being upwards of 700,000. Much of that money must be devoted to learning loss acquisition. So we need to spend a lot of that in instruction. There are many more restrictions in terms of what the new money can be used for. So it is meant to, not to, it's supplemental money, it's not meant to supplant. So there's already something that was in the budget and approved for, we are not supposed to devote money to it.
So to answer your question, the 288 that I have coming back for money that we've already spent on all this air conditioning and everything else, that's something we get earmarked for, something like this, a maintenance capital project.
Okay, my other questions are instructional. How many instructional coaches do you have now in each building? I mean, it seems like every year we keep seeing more and more requests for instructional. I mean, how many do you have now?
I have a shared language arts coach between two elementary schools, a shared mathematics position between two elementary schools, one shared between the high school for literacy and one shared between the high school and middle school for mathematics. We have four coaches in the district, which is much less than most other districts are sized.
Okay, when you say much less, what, what, what do you go like to use as?
On average, most districts have, especially in elementary schools, one coach for mathematics, one for literacy per elementary school.
Per elementary school.
Per elementary school plus now many are also doing a STEM or a science coach as well as technology instructional specialists.
And when you have the priority in here for the STEM program, what are the kinds of things that you still need to do? Because I know you've been doing a lot with the STEM program.
So for instance, as Scott said, we are adding the biomedical project Lead the Way course, which was actually presented at our Board of Ed meeting last week, last month. We are also continuing to add things such as Mystery Science K5, which is an NGSS-aligned science course and curriculum in which we have a teacher that makes sure that she reaches all students in K2 weekly and in the 3-5 school daily. So with science, just as it was years ago for science kits, we have to replenish the science kits every year as well as add additional courses. With the change in graduation requirements from the state of Connecticut, we must add additional courses in science and mathematics to meet the demands of not only electives, but what it is that is required to graduate.
So what's the status of the chiller at Jerome Harrison? Because we allocated that money last year based on.
So that's a John Florio question. I think that's a John, I mean, he can tell you exactly where that's at and what's.
Well, the pitch was made to us that it was imperative that the money, that we allocated the money and we did in capital. And I haven't, we haven't seen any RFPs come through to replace that chiller or to do anything about it. And the pitch was made that it was imperative we do it before it became a critical piece. So that's why we did allocate the money. And now we're approaching a year and nothing has been done with it yet. So I just.
Again, I'd have to ask John Florio where that's at in the process.
Because if he's also.
Do you add that to your list too?
If he's also doing that and the unit ventil, if that's his project and the unit ventilers.
Doing the chiller unit himself, but he can tell where, he'll tell us where it's at the process for what needs to be done and where it's at.
Okay. And then, so I see there's two boilers, new oil boilers for TVES. And I know that the town is receiving, you know, money, federal money. And part of that, which we have received the information, has talked about infrastructure and things like that. So we're checking into seeing if any of that money can be used for gas hookup because that has been on our radar to hook up for gas for Stanley T and for TVES.
That's one that we talked about.
Right.
Several years.
Correct.
We priced out and running the line up through and doing our building and Tietuket Valley, both. Was it Village Street or?
Well, when the gas company came in, they wanted to do like a whole section residential around there and things. You know, we're looking at bringing the line basically so that we can hook up the schools and, you know, maybe the ambulance company across the, you know, that's a town building across and if the fire department wants to hook up or whatever. Not necessarily concentrating on the whole area that Southern Connecticut Gas did. I mean, we still have to have conversations with them. But that would be one item that, that I would like to see. It probably wouldn't get funded this year just based on the fact that if we can use some of this money to gas, that that's a good thing. And I know in talking when we just replaced the two boilers at the high school and those are gas.
They're well dual.
Well, yes, but if.
They're like gas, but they're dual.
Right, but they're relatively new and they can be used in other buildings. So I know they won't be used in the new high school. But if we can use that money and it was substantial money that we paid for those boilers and be able to use them at another school.
Means that gets to Tietuket?
Yeah.
Nine dollars. I know the answer.
Well, I mean, I don't know if they need both of them, but if one can be used there and one can be used at Stanley T.
One boiler for two unit ventilators. And we'll have a few, but I know that's the plan. We're going to resurrect them after, and that's the plan.
Yeah, so I mean, I, not that we would, you know, that's kind of the reasoning that we would table that just so that we can get more information and look at that possibility. And if we can reuse them someplace. And then the playground project, I just, I just know that that's happening right now. So this is talking about for July 1st, but that project will be done by then, right?
Yeah, 9,000 was donated from the PTO and we were trying to get some other donations from other.
But, but if it's, if the project's already done, we can't fund it in the July 1st.
I don't think it's done right now. I think when this was drafted, you're getting pretty close, Carter, to it.
Yeah, I would say it's pretty close.
So this is one you could probably take off the list. It should be done hopefully in the next six weeks.
Okay, that, I was just wondering, I know, because I've been working with Franny, that's the only reason I know is because I've been coordinating things with them. So I knew it was happening now and this was for the July 1st budget, so.
We built this.
Right.
We built this, it was, yeah, he started way ahead of time when he had good weather, which was great. So this kind of threw our timing.
Okay.
So that's one you could probably take off the list.
I just want to clarify one thing, I'm sorry. For Councilwoman Diamond, the coaches are currently only partially funded by the board. So when you mentioned that we continue to ask for coaches, it's because the funding for the coaches that we're currently using ends this year.
I do remember you asking many times.
So it is, so those weren't approved. We used a grant that we received for school improvement and now that money is now lapsing. So we have to seek funding from other sources.
That's a good question about pre-K. How many, do you have, you may not have it at your fingertips, but how many families apply to be in the pre-K program?
So we're at 20.
So we have 36 families that applied and sent applications during our application period. Meaning there are always some that afterwards seek it, but we close it because the part of it is grant funded and we have to have a C score of the applications because we go through. So we have 36 spots that where people were requesting to be part of our Jerome Harrison Board of Education preschool, which is our Smart Start funded program. And then there are also additional students that are in our Pride program and in our FRC.
Right, so about half of the families get into the.
A little less than, than half. We normally have a waiting list. Last year, because of COVID, parents, some parents chose not to send their children. So we did go into the waitlist. But without, in the last three years, which has been since the inception of the program, we've always had more than 10 to 12 students on the waitlist.
So usually take in about 15.
Okay.
So we're looking at the potential, if we could get state grants for another three-year commitment, we would open up a second classroom.
Yep.
We have the two classrooms there in the FRC building. So our goal would be to double that and then have 30 students have that full day experience before starting kindergarten. That would put us in great shape, especially coming out of the pandemic.
So where do you think that, that's in terms of the timeline, is that like a next year?
Well, it's the state where we've already had communication.
So it's pending, you have a parent, you have a kid, got it?
Yeah, that's our goal, that's our plan.
Well, it's the funding, there is no grant application yet, it's the funding availability through the state. They are trying, we've specifically, North Branford has had conversations with the state looking for funding because some preschools will be closing after this year and not returning. So we're looking to recoup some of the funding that other places were given for North Branford. So it would be a special case scenario, but they have indicated that it is more likely that we would receive it next year than we would have in the previous two.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, just one so I don't forget first. Who's taking the lead on the biomed program?
Who's taking the lead on it?
Yeah.
Well, it's through Project Lead the Way, so it's a prescribed curriculum. So our science department person has to be certified to teach the class or she goes out or he goes out for a summer training and they get certified. And then they bring the curriculum back through Project Lead the Way. So we run the gamut of engineering classes, starting with introductory to structural to electrical. So we're adding this to our offerings to our students.
Okay.
So it's a national program, Project Lead the Way. If you Google it, there's a great, their website is very informative. And all of our teachers have to be certified to instruct, but they have to go away and do a several-week training. And that's offered usually through University of Haven, depending upon the course.
Okay, thank you. And then just to go back to the numbers. So if I understood you correctly, you're looking at potentially 288,000 dollars plus another 700,000 dollar grant. So maybe close to a million dollar reimbursement between the two?
288 for what we're talking about that's on the screen. The other 700 is for instructional and things related to loss of learning because of the pandemic.
And that's meant to be stretched until 2023, school year ending 2023.
So the 288 is a number that you can feel confident with that we could, you know, do some of these things.
Okay, and I always mix it up, so forgive me. Last year, we, we let you hold it, was it 2% or 3%?
2%, last year, 1% the year before.
Right, so what are the balances of those two accounts currently?
They're sitting.
Sitting.
Sitting with Anthony in the safe.
So.
I can get your list for you.
I don't think they've been touched yet.
Yeah, I believe they have. The 1% from a couple of years has not been touched. They, 2% has been touched.
Okay.
Just small amount though.
Yeah.
Very small amount, so you're probably looking at.
900,000? Because it was 640 something.
Yeah, so whatever has been touched, maybe 900,000 sitting.
Okay. And then just the last question, just curiosity. I appreciate the explanation you gave us on the dean position.
What?
Deans.
The dean position for the schools.
Oh, deans, okay, I'm sorry.
What do you, what's the hierarchy now? You have a principal, you have a vice principal or?
In the high school, I have a principal and a vice principal. The middle school, I have a principal, vice principal. In the element, two elementaries, there's just a principal.
Okay.
And what's, what's happened with a lot of the expectations now with the state for classroom evaluation, teacher evaluation? The administrators are getting pulled and a lot of times they split the evaluations for their staff. So they're out and about quite a bit. So if they're both out evaluating, the dean during their free periods now is a volunteer position. It's good on the resume, excuse me. Many of them have their O92 administrative degree, they're looking to potentially become an administrator. They stay in the office and they do the student department, handle any issues that come up, talk with parents, any discipline things along the lines. And then when the administrator's out, they kind of stand in as being in charge. The lower grades have lead teachers, but the dean really is the one that does the line share of that.
And you're looking to compensate one person in each school?
One in each school, so it would be 8,000 total, 2,000 per person per four schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you talked a little bit about the manufacturing initiative down the road at the high school. I assume that's where that, where that is. It could encompass the middle school also. But I know there's been talk about portions of our existing high school not getting demolished.
So there's a lot of wild speculation.
There has been, and that's why I just want to, because there, I mean, it's been put in emails and I just want to put this to rest right now.
So would that be amazing and an opportunity, yes? Do I think it's going to happen, no? So we would be looking at a space of probably 10,000 square feet to do that, 10,000 or 12,000 square feet?
Like new construction type of thing or?
No, it'd have to be, it'd have to be existing space to do it. And the partnership would be through Husatonic where they would run night courses. We would look at welding, advanced welding, CNC machinery and a couple of other hands-on, skill-based things that we would do with our kids during the day. And it would mirror our auto shop that we currently have and our woodworking shop. So we would really have a comprehensive program. And then there's other things that potentially we could do with that that we would want to do. It's finding that space. The ideal thing would have been if we could save the back corner of that building and just put a wall there and converted that. If the federal government and the state government would pay for that and do it, it would be ideal. Because then what you have is an opportunity to keep all of your manufacturing on site in that, in that situation. And then you could run other things out of it, that would be ideal. But that's, you know, we'd have to really have conversations to make that happen.
Well, it seems like we would have to alter the plans that were approved.
You would demolish less. You would, obviously, looking at what we're doing, you would demolish less and leave the very back portion of the building standing and that would be your new space. So.
Right, but what would that do to our reimbursement rate and everything that we'd just gone through?
Well, no, you'd have to, that's the conversation that if it ever got to, we would say, one, is it possible? And the architect and the trustee with the state would have to investigate all of that.
Okay.
So we're not adding, it's not counted in the square footage because it's a standalone building. So it's, it's not connected to by a bridge or anything else. So if it's sitting alone and it's separate, it's kind of appealing to Husatonic Valley because then for nighttime courses and things like that, for people in our community that want to learn trades and skills, they could use it at night, they could generate income back. We've even talked about the possibility of leaving our existing greenhouse, having our 18 to 21-year-old program go in there potentially or into a spot where they could then do that, do sustainable, and then have the food pantry move in there as well. Because I know the food pantry is looking potentially for another space. So these are all out there right now. Obviously, there's nothing concrete. The biggest thing that we would want to do was, would be to find a way to do manufacturing for our students. What it would look like, where it could go, how it could be done. There's such a need for it in this country, there's such a need for it in Connecticut. And I think we have an opportunity to really put us on the map if we can get the funding through the state and the federal government to do it. And there's jobs, guaranteed jobs right away in the trades at the defense industries and other, you know, places right here in town. Honeywell has already told us they would work with us. If you get these kids skilled, starting in middle school, we would start this in middle school. These kids, looking at about 10 to 15 kids per year per class, 60 kids involved in the trades over four years, coming out with an associate's degree from Husatonic Community College. Boy, do you have a leg up and you're ready to go.
I just don't want to, we did so much work to get the new high school and I just don't want to jeopardize anything with that.
We would never, how many years did it take us to get that high school? I'm barely alive in the process to get the high school, you know what I'm talking about. So saying that, if there's the opportunity with research, with a lot of cooperation, with a lot of private donations, with a lot of corporations looking to bring this into our town and we could do it without jeopardizing anything. and we could do it without jeopardizing anything, I think it's something we really should take a look at. Because I, you know, we've, I'm going off on a tangent. How much time do I have?
Go ahead.
What we've sold kids about every kid having to go to college and spend a lot of money and then good luck going to find a job, that, all that shifting into now, let's, let's learn a trade if you're interested in trades, let's get you job-ready, career-ready, everything-ready so when you walk out of here, you've got an associate's degree and you've got a job waiting for you.
Scott, the one question I have about that, and I fully support the trades, and I think in the future, the trades is going to be where it's at, just for a lot of the reasons that you just stated. The only thing, sitting on a town council and thinking about fiscal responsibility and stuff like that, is that, you know, that takes a lot of time, energy, and money to put something like that together. And you had told me at one time that like somewhere between ninety-six and ninety-eight percent of our graduating seniors go to college.
Well, no, that's, we have eighty percent that go to two or four a year, about five percent go in the military, about seven or eight percent go to the workforce. So we're high, and we're in the eighties. But I think that's going to be a shift, you're going to see a change over the next several years. And I think a lot of students, if they have exposure to the opportunity to earn an associate's degree while they're in high school and it costs them zero, and they have a skill set that they can walk and go to electric boat and start welding for X amount of dollars and get a, or do whatever they're going to do on a CNC machine or go up to Honeywell, I think we're going to change the way a lot of kids go to college just to go to college. And then they come out four years later and they, they don't know what they want to do. You know, so yeah, we, our numbers are good with that, but I think if we're here to prepare kids for the future and for an occupation and jobs and jobs that pay well and clean manufacturing or things like that, this is the way to go with it. And it would have to be with the federal, state. Roger Solway is a great resource. Roger Solway is, he's very dynamic, and I know you know Roger, but you know, he's got a lot of connections and if the money comes and there's an opportunity and the council wants to take it on and the board wants to take it on and have a conversation about it, I think we should, you know, at least be open-minded to it.
Scott.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I just want to be clear on something. I'm hearing things about curriculum and manufacturing, which is one set of issues, but then I'm hearing it bleed into the new construction of the school, which makes me very, very nervous. I'm just requesting that anything that involves the construction of the new high school be brought to the Board of Education, the Town Council, and the Building Committee. I don't think that anything should be discussed or researched until these three bodies confirm that it is acceptable to move forward. If it's a straight curriculum issue and it could be done in the existing space of the new high school that's being built, that's fine, that's out of our purview. Well, not the worst, but when it's going to hit the new high school that we've all agreed to, that there was a tug-of-war that we worked so hard on, I think that should remain, unless we all come to agreement.
I totally agree with you.
So I just want to make sure that I'm crystal clear, because since you told me I was on TV, I want to just say, thank you very much.
So the speculation of, yeah, these are all conversation pieces, you know, and it's like when Tuc- TV moved into the building, you know, that they're at now and that worked out, is there a space somewhere in town that could fit our needs and that's already existing, and what would it look like? If it's not the space at the high school, obviously, we're not going to jeopardize anything with this new building. But we have to be open-minded to looking at, you know, every opportunity. If this is something that could, you know, potentially hit four different groups, you know, with our, you know, our eighteen-to-twenty-one program, our pantry, our, you know. It's not something.
I think, I think, I think that's a great idea. I know you've talked about this for a while. I talked to you about this a couple of years ago. I agree with Ron, I think it's really important. When I went to school, it was a long time ago, we had programs like that.
Yeah.
And it helped out a lot of the, a lot of the kids that I went to school with. They didn't want to go to college, back then, everybody didn't go to college. It helped out a lot of these kids getting jobs. And now I see, and now I see the trades kind of falling off, people not getting into them anymore. And it's going to be really important. These guys are making decent money too. I think it's a great way to get them started and get them involved in this. I, I'm all for it.
Yeah, and again, these are, we've been talking about this for years. And it's something that we could still be talking about for years, but it's important to have a conversation. We're never going to do it if we don't at least explore it, examine it, and see what we can bring to the community. And I, and we were earmarking about ten to fifteen students per class, which is about ten percent of each class going through having this opportunity. And that would be pretty impressive if they came through with an associate's degree, you know, in a prescribed curriculum and, you know, we're ready to go and hit the ground running with a great-paying job.
Scott, you know, I'm all for the trades. I mean, I'm into trades. I know, everybody knows that, you know, trades are really needed now. But the one thing is, you know, we've already had the taxpayers of North Branford who are paying for this new high school, paying for a new police station. And at the same time, you know that I kind of fought for the new, didn't want the new high school. I wanted to refurbish the existing one, wanted to put a lot of money into it, you know, thinking that sixty-five million dollars was a lot for the high school. And, you know, one of the key features that, you know, made everybody kind of think we had to go with a new one was that our old high school was unusable. You know, hazardous, you know, the ceilings are too low, just unusable. We cannot use the old high school, cannot be saved. And now we're talking about making another school, turning that into a trade school. So now North Branford's going to be building a new police station, a new high school, and now we're talking about building a trade school?
Well, no, we would, here's what I started with. If federal and state monies came in, and it doesn't have to be the high school, it could be any twelve thousand square foot spot if it was feasible to do. We're not looking to, you know, ask the taxpayers to do anything. That is what we, you know, I started this off with. It would have to be almost an opportunity that we couldn't say no to. And I'm not saying it's the high school, but it could be anywhere.
I'm just saying, I'm absolutely against keeping any of the old school up. I mean, we're spending sixty-five million dollars because we couldn't use any of that building, which I, I knew we could use that building. But now, you know, we got to tear the, it's got to all come down, so we got to build a brand-new high school. And now we're going to, you know, start saving more buildings, more buildings we got to heat, more we got to maintain, more we got to refurbish.
It could be somewhere else.
Thank you.
We just have to find a spot that works out.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Scott, thank you, the Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stretch it. Yeah, why don't we take five? Why don't we take five? Three.
What?
Take three minutes.
What's that, the capeterius thing?
Yeah, downward cap is, tech edge is down there, the arc, you know. I know, that's why, that's why I just want to put it to rest for you. Because it did come up.
That's why Shannon got up too, you know. Shannon got up. She knew where we were going. She wanted to stop. That's because our economic development guy is getting involved.
Roger, we got a five-minute pause.
It's amazing that none of that money gets touched.
The reason I didn't.
Two percent, a percent.
I have a reason for you to ask that question.
Lauren, if you have one for me, that would be amazing. To try and.
If not, I'll give you.
Capture it all in the minutes. I appreciate it.
Well, yesterday, and then she sent a reminder today that it started at six thirty.
I did what, then? I was not on the list.
Obviously, because I said, oh, Michelle's not here, and I said, can we just start? She can pick up the recording.
Yeah, but it wasn't, so we're going to have to go back, you know, I'll figure it out.
Mike took.
He did, he took all those notes, so I appreciate that.
There wasn't much, there wasn't much there.
I'm like always one of the forgotten few. It's my lot in life.
Yeah, and this is most of it right here.
We're ready.
Script, you read right, right from.
Okay.
And I give you copyright, you have a.
I don't.
Yeah.
Library.
All right, next we have library.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lauren Davis. I'm the library director here in North Branford. And I gave everybody a few handouts to follow along with the presentation. The first one is a simple slide that just highlights some of the important things from our budget request this year. And then the second handout was a more detailed account of each of our accounts in our budget this year. And then the third packet is pictures supporting our request for our capo improvement through our painting of both libraries. You guys can follow along with that as I kind of just go through and summarize what our request is for this year. For obvious reasons, this year has looked a little bit different due to COVID and the upcoming year will probably carry a little bit of that different feel to it with some adjustments and changes having to be made. This budget is a representation of what it takes to provide services and operate with limitations in place due to COVID while planning for a future where COVID doesn't exist, hopefully. It's mindful of our current situation, combined with optimism and a look towards the future with less restrictions. It allows for services that are useful now, but readies us for when those limitations and restrictions ease up. We've made some significant adjustments to our service model this year to adapt to the needs of the community and the conditions we're in. This budget reflects our ability to evaluate services and the needs of the community, I feel, and then make those necessary adjustments to keep in touch and stay relevant with the community. We reinvented certain services to a virtual remote model. And I think our attempt at being creative, adapting, and our behind-the-scenes diligence proved our resiliency throughout the pandemic and showed how future-proof we can be and adaptable. I'm really proud of the librarians and their ability to continue to serve and adapt and to think outside the box. I know that was a buzzword, but it really, for our department, proved very important to try to continue service in obviously a very different manner than what we're used to providing it. We worked hard to introduce new services with curbside service, virtual reference, virtual tech support, and a virtual summer reading program. After drastically reducing in-person programming and in-person services, we reimagined our role in the community and attempted and expanded, excuse me, our digital offerings. We worked on passive programming, we worked on virtual programming, we worked on at-home learning services with educational backpacks provided to families. We did a story walk implementation with the Parks and Rec Department. We did outside storytimes. We tried to do a little bit of everything to reach as many people as we could at their comfort level. I've said it before, programming is a core service that we offer. It's essential to what we do because it's popular and it's effective. I think programming allows libraries to give people something less tangible than books, but it's just as essential. It's another tool we use to provide learning and entertainment opportunities to meet the informational and educational needs of the community. In a time where household budgets are tight, people are relying on their public libraries for a variety of different reasons, and we just couldn't stop programming because it couldn't be held in person. As a result of COVID, we introduced take-and-make craft bags, which goes back to the passive programming part of what we worked on. And it's, these are bags or kits that are maker activities, they're DIY projects that families can work at home together. It's a great way for learning, discovery, inventing. These to-go bags have all the materials needed to complete the activity at home. And it's the closest way we could get to in-person programming and to stay connected with our patrons in a safe manner. So the take-and-make bags were not something we intended to do. It just happened to explode into something really popular and it worked to fit the needs of the situation we were in. The public library's role in the 21st century is changing, and this budget reflects that. This is another important part that I'm trying to stress in this budget. Digital services and offerings encompasses a large portion of this budget. But it's also important to know that public libraries are critical resource centers for a variety of different resources. The American Library Association released its 2020 State of America's Libraries Report, and it's an annual summary that highlights issues and trends affecting libraries, not just public libraries, but libraries, every type of library, public, academic, special. And while this report that I'm referencing speaks to 2019, it shows that libraries are on the front lines of addressing societal and community challenges. And I think it's certainly a role that played out this past year with the pandemic. Oftentimes, libraries take on roles outside of traditional library service, and you'll see that in this budget. Sometimes we act as social workers, career counselors, technology instructors, and we work hard to adopt special programs to fill the needs of the community from the most vulnerable to the most curious. And you'll see that in our programming budget, the three-twenty account and the two-twenty account, I believe, encompasses our programming aspect of this budget. And it's important for me to stress to you that it's part of what we do because it's one of the many resources that we offer. The best proof that libraries are more than just books is their evolution into library of things. These are non-traditional collections that are community-specific and imaginative. And in our four oh-five account technical equipment, we have costs allocated for two new non-traditional collections. It's a seed library and a library of things, library of things, excuse me. Both broaden the scope of the libraries and allows us to provide access to things that people may want to try, gardening, for example, or they may need, but they don't want to be burdened with the cost of owning it. So it's something that we're exploring and we're hoping that we can have the funds allocated for it so that we can work on that. I'll say one example with the library of things, hotspots. During the pandemic, there were a lot of people who would sit out in our parking lot and they would just take advantage of our free Wi-Fi. Hotspots would allow them not to have to sit in their car and attempt to do schoolwork, homework, you know, professional work. And that's the kind of concept of what this explores here. One other point that I wanted to talk about because it's a significant increase in our budget is our part-time account. This increase is kind of dictated by the state minimum wage guidelines. So we currently have three levels of part-time staff, excluding these part-time facilities, which I will discuss also. And they all make different salaries based on their levels that they fall under. And it goes with different job responsibilities, different tasks, different assignments. And to keep us on track with incremental increases implemented by the state for the state minimum wage guidelines, I proposed a three-and-a-half percent increase for all part-time employees to avoid pay compression. Because I really think it's important to keep the levels different between level one, two, and three. It goes from library assistant, senior library assistant, to part-time librarian. I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with the minimum wage guidelines, but our current lowest level of part-time employee makes thirteen fifty-three with a three-and-a-half percent increase for this coming fiscal year. That would bring them to fourteen dollars an hour, which would put them in line for the fourteen dollars by July first, 2022. They would still need to jump up an hour, a dollar per hour to fifteen dollars an hour the next fiscal year. They would still need to jump up an hour, a dollar per hour to $15 an hour the next fiscal year. So at some point, you're going to have to make a big leap. But again, I'd like you to keep in mind, I'm trying to avoid the pay compression and keep people at the very distinct levels. I feel like it's also important for me to mention that these are not minimum wage jobs. These are her professional positions, libraries support staff that perform a variety of tasks that require specialized knowledge in library practices, procedures, function, skills. And I really don't think they should be treated as such minimum wage positions. So that's one component that's driving the significant increase with our part-time account. The other factor is my part-time custodian. My part-time custodian currently makes 1538 an hour. I proposed a seven percent increase to bring them up to 1646. And I did an informal survey of area libraries and their custodians, and I've discovered that our custodian is significantly underpaid. I don't feel this is making a fair wage based on some of the information I've collected. And I can share that with you. It ranges from 1624 an hour all the way up to 2272 an hour. And ours is at 1538. I really don't think that's a fair wage for this position. In a pandemic, maintaining two public libraries. So that's also what's driving the significant increase for our part-time account. Are there any questions? I try to highlight the major parts of our requests. I can talk a little bit about the capital request for the painting of the two libraries. I have tried to provide pictures of both buildings in your handouts. One is 10 pictures of Atwater, one is 10 pictures of Smith. And most of it is cosmetic damage. But again, Atwater, I think Smith's been open for 12 years, Atwater's been open for 11 years. Neither of these buildings has been painted inside. And I really just think you'll see normal wear and tear from the public coming in six, seven days a week, you know, 10 hours a day. It really should just be updated, refreshed.
I have a question on that. So last year, we instituted a, a fund for maintaining town properties, which this is ideally what we, I think we all had in mind. Is it possible to put together a three- to four-year plan where we do, you know, we, we use some of that fund money and we, we do, you know, one room, one year, and then, you know, work our way through it? Or is this something that you feel all has to be done right now?
I honestly feel like that is fine if we even went on a regular schedule where every five years we were in this rotation where a person in the library was painted. But I'm happy with that. I would say Smith is maybe a little bit more soft than Atwater, but I think it should be on your radar, whether or not it gets done all at once in a capital request or if it's on a schedule of every three years we do, you know, half the building in one year and then half the.
I appreciate you providing the pictures too because last year, some people had told us that it's, they don't really need to be painted, and they're really not that bad. So adding the pictures in there was.
I think it's important for you to see that it is normal wear and tear, and a simple refresh like a painting will do wonders. Not only will it, you know, make the buildings look pleasing, but I think it will help with allergens. And I will also say that we take pride in our work, and we also take a lot of pride in our buildings. A lot of my staff worked at the buildings prior to the renovation. And when I tell you they are ecstatic to be in these new buildings, they want to keep them looking their best. They never want to go back to what it was pre-2009. So this is part of our goal, to keep these buildings looking. They're well-built, I think they're beautiful buildings, and I think a simple fix like a paint job will go a very long way. Yes, I understand, they'd save lots of money. These are big buildings. You know, we're talking 12,000 square feet, 30,000 square feet. So I highly recommend, if not doing it all at once, having on some type of sketching.
Ron took the words right out of my mouth when he said the pictures are, I was gonna say the same thing. The pictures are perfect. Have you had any prices on what it would cost to do all of the painting? Do you have any idea what it would do to do all of this?
Yeah, it was in our budget. It was in the handout. I think one is 20-some thousand and one is 30-some thousand.
So for around 50,000, we're talking with.
Fifty-five, probably.
I think it's up to 60. So Atwater, Smith was 28,750, and Atwater was 37,500, only because Atwater's a little bit larger in size.
So maybe we can do like one of them this year with, you know, a good chunk of that funds right there. I mean, because obviously, we definitely have to do something.
It depends on what the bid comes in at, too, you know. Bids usually are a lot lower than a necessary.
Which we definitely need to do something.
Which one needs it more, Lauren?
She said.
I would say Smith.
The only thing is, the only thing with that is, and I'll just throw this out there, and I'm open for whatever anybody else has to say. If we do it, if we, if we were to do it all now, then we fall into that rut again that, okay, we, we did that. Now we might end up 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, we still haven't done anything, we haven't maintained it. I'm thinking if we, if we start to use this fund and even bolster this fund if we need to, and we get in the practice in town of consistently maintaining our properties, I think in the long run would be better served.
But this, this looks like it's multiple years. This didn't happen over a couple of years. So I would think that if we addressed kind of all of it at once, then every couple of years, then if we did every couple of years, you know, put the maintenance on. Because I mean, this is obviously pretty, pretty rough.
This is 12 years' worth of.
Yeah, that's 2009 up to today.
Right, so, I mean, if we're spending $65 million on a high school, I think we could spend this on, you know, key buildings in our town. It doesn't seem like a bad 50,000.
No, it doesn't.
But kind of off, off the, the record here, the, when you're. You said, when you say the library's evolving, and you hear these words a lot now, evolving and reimagining and changing, that doesn't have anything to do with changing our history, does it, our American history?
No, no, no.
Like the Dr. Seuss books are still in there?
They're, they're still there. We talked about it at our last board meeting. You can go back and look at the minutes, they are not going anywhere. When I say reinventing, you know, we're trying to move away from the hush-hush environment of, you know, tons of textbooks where people aren't allowed to, you know, enjoy themselves. I came on board and I embraced the living room effect. I've said it before, where this is your library, this is not my library, this is your library. You're meant to come in and have it be a place where you can meet your neighbors, where you can study if you wanted to, but where I worked really hard trying to move away from the traditional sense of a library and a librarian. I know there's that intimidation factor of people coming in and thinking they're gonna get scolded with a fine or an overdue book or a hush-hush librarian. I'm really, that's what I mean by reinventing or reimagining. What is useful to this community as opposed to what's a longstanding definition of a library? So, and, but we still hold on to our values, and by that it means access to information, all information. That's what we provide. It's not our decision necessarily to say what's right or wrong. It's provided, you make the decision, so.
I think we have to do something with this, otherwise it's gonna be like the other buildings. You have, it's gonna be worse and worse and worse. Before you know it, it'll be a mess.
Well, I think, I think what we can do is look at, maybe we can do one with, if there's money left over in budgets this year, if we can do one within this, this budget year and then budget one for next year, so that we get them done.
Sure, and we can use some of that 50,000 that we had aside.
Right, but there might also be budget funds.
Yeah, I, I.
From another department.
Yeah, I think, I think that, that money is being looked at closely right now, but that's a good idea.
Yeah, just to, to look at it and see.
Yeah.
Help us on the way.
I had one more, you agree?
Yeah, I agree.
Just one more question, I'm sorry. I know it's, sorry, I know it's other contractual services, but utilities went up quite a bit, like 4,600 bucks. Do you know why that is?
Ever since I started, utilities have always been an issue for me. It jumped significantly my first year, and I honestly cannot attribute a single reason to it. We had a couple of people come out and looking at the geothermal part of it to see if there was a pump running in the background, to see if it's because I turned on the supplemental heating. Atwater is in UI territory, Smith's in Longford Electric. UI, I think, is definitely the most problematic when it comes to electrical costs. I know people always say the lights are always on, but the lighting panel is a whole other nightmare. I think that building is just, uses a lot of electricity because there's a lot of electrical components to it. But I can't say I can attribute it to something specific. It could be that there was supplemental heat on to try to maintain the temperature. We have geothermal there. I don't know, I try to at least average it out every three years to, you know, make it look, you know, offset one year, one side of the other, but we don't do anything different other than turn the lights on and off at night and then turn on the supplemental heating if it gets to be, you know, too cold.
Okay.
You have a big increase in telephone.
Yes, the telephone has a lot of items attached to that account. So it covers our internet at both buildings, it covers our fiber maintenance at, Atwater only because they had to run a line in the high school when we switched over to fiber in 2017, and we were responsible for maintaining the fiber. It includes our regular telephone lines, but it also includes our frontier lines for our fire alarm, our fax line, which we didn't want to give up when the town switched over to the voice IP phone system. So we also have the voice IP phone system for our regular phones. We have a lot of.
So it really encompasses a lot, not just telephone.
Right, yes, it's internet, it's my cellphone, it's the building's phone, it's the elevator line. It's, it's a lot of telephone, but yes, that would be.
So it was like double, I think.
I think it's because we have the frontier lines and the regular telephone lines where people can call in our direct number. So we have those two companies, we have the internet, we have the fiber maintenance, my cellphone.
But do you use the fax lines a lot?
Yes.
Okay.
I, when the town switched over, you know, I was pretty adamant about keeping it because, believe it or not, I know it sounds antiquated, but I would say at least once a day, one person comes in at each building wanting to fax something. The state police and all the faxing services, insurance companies, doctor's offices. I couldn't give that up, and honestly, wouldn't be closed. That was the one thing we would get the most phone calls about, we're almost supposed to fax now. So I can't give it up. I know that we have.
But you can't have a fax line with the voice over?
You can have e-faxing, but it would have to go to an email address, I believe. And I did not want the staff to have to have incoming faxes for personal items in there, for emails. I tried to separate that out. If we're helping people with faxing, we don't necessarily want to be looking at their personal information, having it come into our emails.
I know the school system has the voice over, the, the voice lines, but they have fax. We have regular fax, but it's all through the same system.
Is it e-faxing, though?
No.
It has to go through.
No, we just, we have to dial nine for an outside line and then fax.
Oh, okay.
And, and you get a, you know, confirmation page that it went through. It doesn't, it doesn't go to an email, it goes to a regular number, so I don't know what.
I can look into it, I could talk to Anthony and Dennis to see if it's something we can explore. We still do have to keep the frontier lines, though, for our fire alarm and our elevator line. I don't believe that we're allowed to do that.
If you're dialing nine, you're not a voice over ID line. You're dialing, you're still in your Centrex, you're bound to get out of the Centrex if the nine is for. We have the same here, our, our front fax is old school, you gotta dial nine-one to get out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, your, your fax is not a voice over ID.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Parks and Rec.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry. Carrie, you want to run one next here? Do you want to run one five? Oh, I can kind of leave it here. All right, good evening. So this is Parks Recreation and the Senior Center presentation tonight. What I handed you is an exact packet of our presentation, so it's the same thing you'll see up on the slides. I'd like to start off by thanking the town council for your support through this year. Without the support of the town council, we wouldn't have been able to service these, the community through these challenging times. Despite the challenges presented by a global pandem- pandemic, our department was not only able to continue to offer services, but even created new programs, events, and offered many of our services at no cost to the community. In March, we quickly pivoted our essential senior meal programs to a home delivery system. To date, we have provided and delivered over 4,812 meals, of which 2,667 were of no cost to the seniors and costing our department about $8,000. With the support of the Public Works Department and in collaboration with the Greater New Haven United Way, we coordinated and assisted in distributing 364 farm-to-family food boxes that included about 10 pounds of food to individuals and family, families in the community. And this went to any community member, whether you had kids, seniors, everybody. Oh, oh, and then, no, Carrie's gonna speak, sorry.
Hi, Carrie Haynes, Recreation Supervisor. Over this past year, we were able to host multiple free and safe community events. Our events attracted anywhere, community events attracted anywhere from 300 to 1,500 participants per event. Safely, I want to add. These events helped foster our relationships with other organizations in town, such as the Rotary Club, the North Frankford Land Trust, our public libraries, the Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works, whose support has been crucial to us in, in helping create what we like to call some Park and Rec magic. Some of the events that we've collaborated with other.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Hey, guys. Can you keep it down, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Some of the events that we collaborated with other departments were Candy Cane Lane, which was a really quick turnaround from our traditional tree lighting event. We had two weeks to reinvent our traditional tree lighting and turn it into a drive-through event. Traditionally, we would have 400 to 500 people attend the event. This year, we had 500 cars full of people attend our event. We also did the Bunny Trail recently, some story walks, our Poco Drive-Thru, just to note some of the activities that, that we've offered our community. When our seniors were pretty much locked down and unable to utilize Zoom, everybody was zooming. Well, most seniors weren't zooming. We were able to partner with Totucket TV, and we brought our programs into their living room with faces of instructors that they knew. They were able to do their chair exercise, their chair yoga, their get-fit. We even did crafts and then had craft kits that seniors could pick up, or we would drop off to them, and they could do the craft along with the instructor via Totucket TV because everybody has access to their public access channel. When so many were feeling isolated throughout this pandemic, we made it our priority to offer events that would boost community morale and provide essential social engagement opportunities where people could safely connect. Our department rose to the challenges of COVID, and we creatively developed over 50 new programs for our community. Whether it was our Great Goblin giveaway, boo treats for our seniors, or recreating a holiday event, our department had a positive and consistent presence in the community. I'd also like to add that I feel. I'd also like to add that I feel really proud of our rec department. I feel really proud of the programs that, that we were able to bring people together when everyone felt so far apart. Our programs offered families a chance to, to escape, to get away from the, the COVID, the everyday, the everyday COVID stuff would, things felt scary and everyday stuff felt overwhelming. We were able to provide an opportunity of some sort of normalcy. Our programs, I feel, have provided a lasting emotional, social emotional impact on our community, especially the children that were able to do something fun. And we hope that these children will be able to remember and reflect on that year we had COVID, but they were able to find a leprechaun door out in the woods. And they could share these stories with their children someday.
So when we look back at fiscal year 2019, 2020, when pre-COVID, we offered 79 programs between Recreation and Senior as well as nine special events. To date for this fiscal year, we've offered 77 programs, 26 of which were virtual, 48 of which were brand new. So almost all of our program was completely new. We were able to offer 10 special events and 14 community engagement campaigns, all of which have never been offered before. So you can imagine, as we continue on this trajectory, we will more than likely double our pre-covering offerings. So when everybody was slowing down, our department doubled, or can double. In addition to providing programs and events and essential services throughout an unprecedented year, when the need presented itself for our department to host vaccination clinics, the staff didn't hesitate. The department created numerous VAMS accounts, which if any of you guys have tried VAMS, it's complicated, time-consuming. And we, and our seniors and residents didn't have access to computers, so we assisted. To date, the department has assisted in hosting 10 clinics and scheduling over 1,000 appointments. And there's one person in our department who has done a majority of that. So we're working on a very small staff doing a lot. When programs could be offered, not be offered inside, our department worked in conjunction with Public Works to ensure that our parks were safe spaces for people to recreate. We added new pickleball courts, a new hockey court at STW, and we're looking forward to installing a brand-new playground at Northford Park this spring. Next slide. So what I did for the budget is I went through and presented the lines, each line of the budget with the increases. So as seen under Personnel Services, there is an increase in part-time wages. As Lauren had mentioned, this is due in part to the mandate of mandatory minimum wage increase as well as custodial hours because of the reopening COVID guidelines issued by the state. So that's kind of the increase that you're seeing in the part-time wages and seasonal wages. Yep. For material supplies, our biggest increase or most notable increase is in technical supplies. This increase is due to seeking funding to replace outdated fitness room equipment, nets and outdoor equipment, as well as outdated kitchen equipment. So we've talked about aging infrastructure. A lot of our equipment in the facility is older and is in need of repairs. So in order to continue programming when we reopen, we're going to need those funds. Under Contractual Services, some of our bigger increases are under our Maintenance Line item. And in our Maintenance Line item, this includes our, our facility maintenance line item includes painting that we've been doing, so we've repainted our entire facility. And this includes plumbing and electrical repairs. We've had numerous leaks with our plumbing and electrical. So to date, we've spent 70% of that budget already and there's still numerous repairs that need to be done. In regards to our equipment, Equipment Rental Line item, it has seen an increase due to our kitchen hood cleaning and fire extinguisher service. So just services that we have to perform. And then overall, we're looking for a 9.32% increase in our budget and about $57,000. So as restrictions begin to lift, our department is looking forward to continuing to provide top-notch, top-notch innovative programs and services and community events. We thank all of you for your continued support. We couldn't do what we do without you and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to say you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
I'd like to, I'd like to say the same, thank you guys for being able to put on with. Just keep it up. The only question I have is for Mike. Again, the, the util, their utilities are up 10,000 and the library facility, her utility around 46,000. Go ahead.
I could talk a little bit to that.
Yeah, sure.
In regards for us, the main increase is due to our water bill. For whatever reason, it was budgeted for the last four or five years at $2 per kilo or cubic square foot and it was actually five. So it was just not, in regards to ours, that's where I noticed the most significant increase in those particular line items. Mike might be able to talk to other costs going up with utilities, but that particular one, I'm, I'm aware of why it's so significant.
Yeah, and there are, there are, Ron, that you point out a good point between both the library and the rec department and issues that we like to probe with respect, and again, I, I, hearing Lauren, I, I think there's a lot to do on her side about the geothermal and the UI territory.
Yeah.
Where for rec department, can't quite put our hand on it, but there's, there's, there's something amiss there that we want to take further review and dive a little bit deeper to come up with whatever, whatever the gap is and why that, what's driving that.
It may be legit, I just, it's just substantial.
We're trying to, trying to reveal what that, what that is, yeah. But, and if I could just echo, you know, again, I appreciate the, the board, the council's comments. I, I think it would be an understatement right now to say how well these two departments have been so resourceful and creative and the synergy that they, they have together. And, and I'll, you know, just focus on the pandemic and the clinics. And so when they get overrun, they stepped in, neither one said, hey, Mike, we can't do this. They just stepped in, stepped up and without a word just said, we're going to get it done for this community. And I think it's a strong testament to, to both departments how dedicated, professional, and passionate they are about their departments and about this community, that they, they've gotten so much done and, and in, in this climate of, of a pandemic. Because they understand, and Lauren, and they both said the same thing, you know, this is, these are your resources. This is your library, this is your rec department. Make no mistake, there is a pent-up demand that they want to come back to their rec department. They want to come back to their library. And that, that's coming and they're well-positioned because they're, they're visionary and they're moving in the direction to create a growth strategy and to meet the demands because, listen, it's the rec department and, and the library. They're not saying, oh, I want to come back to my town hall. It's these two places that they want to come back to and they want, you know, they, they enjoy that. And both, both departments have worked extraordinarily well through this last 12 months, for sure. I just want to say that and I think it's, it can be-
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, I, you know, I deal a lot with people that use both of these departments and, and they're always great comments, they're happy with everything that's going on, the senior citizens, the libraries, I use the library myself. I think you're doing a great job too, I agree with these guys.
Guys should be proud of yourself.
Yeah.
Make a big difference in our town, thank you.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure to serve. It's, it's a wonderful community and we're so pleased to be a part of it and we look forward to showing you the next fiscal year what we can do.
Okay, so I noticed in your 101 account, the full-time, the difference between what the department requested and the manager approved is about 13,000, but there's no indication, the manager approved is 13,000 less than what the department requested, but there's no indication as to where that 13,000 reduction came. So can you just, someone shed some light on that?
I'll tell you, that was a, the commission overwhelmingly wanted to see a pay increase for the director and for the recreation supervisor. Make them a little bit more competitive in the, on the state level for where they are right now. We kind of felt that the pay that they're getting is a little below average and also doesn't encompass the senior center, which most towns, these positions don't have both. Speculative on if there were talks in the previous years, but we haven't- One position is the rec supervisor and currently there, that person has been holding or doing the job of two. So we haven't filled the, what's listed on the budget as a program worker, we haven't filled that in, in two years and that person's been doing the job of, of two with no pay increase.
So Carrie, you were the program worker prior to getting promoted to the rec supervisor?
Correct.
Okay. And so is that part of the reason why the estimated 630, 21 versus the budget? You know, it's so much, there's going to be a lot of money left in that account. Part of that is because that position hasn't been filled, that 38,000?
Correct. We have not filled it, so everything we've done has been missing a part-time, 27-hour-a-week person. That person has, did a lot of our senior programming, which Carrie was able to do some of, and with the pandemic, we didn't feel it was the right time to fill that position. So we have not yet.
So the program worker that's listed on here?
Is it open position? For 38,000?
Is an open position.
Okay.
That the department will look to fill.
The part, the part-time one?
Yes, the part-time one.
The full-time one is still there?
It's filled, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if I look at this and that $13,000 difference in the full-time account, the 101, the way it turns, I think what it is, is roughly about 5,000 for the director and an increase based in this budget and about 8,000 to the rec supervisor? Is that how it comes out?
Yeah.
So when you look at this, the rec supervisor and the secretary make the same amount of money?
Correct.
Which is-
Technically, I think the same.
Which is not good compared to everything we just saw that they, you know, the highlights and what they have done in the last year. I think this is an area that we definitely need to address during the budget season on here. And also, I know because I was, I'm the liaison to Park and Rec, so I was involved when Jessie was hired and I know that she took a pay cut from the job she came from and during our talks, it was very much mentioned and talked about bringing her up to at least where she left her job, much like we just did to the town planner. And it looks like that has not happened.
When was that, last year?
Two.
Two years ago.
Two years?
Yeah. So I think that's another area that we need to address during the budget season on here when we go into deliberations.
Okay.
And I think that's why the commission took the stand that they did, knowing how much the team has worked, especially in this very, this past year during the pandemic. They really stepped up and provided a lot to our community and I think that that needs to be looked at.
I kind of feel we need to look at all of our department heads. I think in many of the cases, we are much lower than our town. I wonder if that's like a reason sometimes we don't get that many applications.
Right, but-
I understand what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying, but I think we're all-
But we just, we just did it with our town planner without, you know, a second thought. And here, you know, it's been two years that this department has been working and nothing has been done in regards to this. And I commend the commission for noticing, looking at that and seeing how much this department has grown and taking the bold step to do it. And now I think we need to discuss that and-
And I think being a small town, it's easy to lose good people to larger towns that do pay more. So if we have good people, we should do what we plan to maintain them as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, everybody all set?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, next we have questions on the 2021, 2022 budget discussion in action opting out of MIRA contract, MIRA contract.
Yeah, so I, I added this one on as a timing issue in terms of our contractual obligations with MIRA and provided the letter that MIRA had sent dated February 26th, arriving March 2nd, I believe, with a short window for us, the town, with an option to opt out of the contract based on their fees increasing and also noting that there are ceasing operations likely in 2022 and that there may be additional decommissioning and closeout costs associated with that in the context of our current RFP and the responses that we have with evaluating the two proposals. In both cases, going with either the current, staying with the current vendor, John's, or going with All American Waste. In both cases, we would be going out of and away from MIRA anyway. So this seems to me as a prudent business move to do, to send notice to MIRA and get out. And I wanted just to have the council make that formal motion to vote to get out of the contract. I reviewed it with Vin Marino, council, he wrote the draft, the letter to send to them to put them on notice. That is July 1st, we would be out of the contract with MIRA. And so that's why, that's why it's before you at, at this time.
Mike, do we want to do that before we actually know what we're going to do? Shouldn't we figure out what we're going to do first and then?
Yeah, well, yeah, like I said, in either, in either case, with either proposal, and, and I should just give a little more color. In terms of the process which we went through, the RFP and the two respondents, during the same, during this period, we were solicited by a company in Wallingford to take our trash at a significantly discounted rate over MIRA. So that's why I said even if we, we stayed with our current hauler, we'd be looking at that current hauler saying going to, to Wallingford and not going to MIRA. And All Waste has their own facilities that they wouldn't be going. In fact, they'll be taking MIRA, they'll be taking most of the, the towns that opt out or are, once they fold, will be going to, to the Berlin facility that All Waste operates anyway. So I think it makes perfect sense that we not stay on the hook or get caught with decommissioning costs, opt out, knowing that we're going to go in a different direction either way with either, either, either company, stay with the current hauler or go with the new, new hauler. Either way, and they're, they're lower, but significant, I mean, the, the tipping fees are either 91 or 95 versus 107, I believe, or 105.
So once we opt out, we're off the hook or?
Well, yeah, once, well, yeah, once we opt out, we're giving, we're putting on notice and there's this very short window to do that and we're, and we're out as of July 1st. Knowing that through this budget process, we're going to select and, and I hope, have it ready for the April 6th meeting.
So as long as we opt out by July 1st?
No, no, we, we have to opt out by, by tomorrow. That's why, yeah, that, that's why I was pushing to, to get this on, it's sent a letter-
It's called a notice.
To that, yeah. And, and really just a formality to get your, your vote on it and, and to move, because we're moved, in both proposals, we're not staying with MIRA.
So our waste will go where?
Well, it would go to, if you stay with the current hauler, it would be easier for them and cheaper for them to haul to Wallingford than it is to Hartford and a cheaper tipping fee. So they go to Wallingford, All Waste has their own in Berlin. And in fact, I think they're investing $30 million or more in their facility there. But in either case, it wouldn't be going to MIRA and MIRA's closing. in either case, you wouldn't be going to MIRA, and MIRA's closing. So I'm worried about, concerned about, you know, you stayed in, trying to figure this out, and then you get stuck with decommissioning costs as well.
I have a couple of questions. How many loads of our recycling get rejected per week, per month?
We're, we're probably, the frequency has increased in the last six weeks, eight weeks, probably two loads a week that we're getting rejected.
I don't know how many people on the council are aware that we're getting loads rejected from the facility, MIRA facility. And what is the recycling committee doing about this? I don't see any education coming out about rejected loads, I don't see any notification. I first learned about it the other day, that we're getting loads rejected. If we, if we don't have a recycling committee that's trying to educate the people, why do we even have a recycling committee? Why don't we just disband it?
No, no, they're, Mike, they're working real hard. It, they.
But there's no education coming out for it.
There has been ongoing education.
Where? I haven't got anything in the mail.
Not recently, because they're designing the campaign right now to work with.
We're getting loads, we're getting loads rejected and nobody knows why. Nobody from the public knows why.
Why are they getting rejected? Like, what are they rejecting for?
MIRA has lowered their threshold typically, I think it was like 15% in terms of their threshold level, so when.
You mean 15%?
Of the load.
Could not be.
Cannot be contaminated.
Okay.
So they lowered it to 5%. So any, let me, let me just try to break it down. And again, you can take the resources behind me to ask as well. My understanding in talking with, when we were on the phone with MIRA, pushing back to say, listen, this is, this is not acceptable to us in terms of the rejection of loads, where, let's just say somebody puts in, trying to do the right thing and recycling their material by putting it in a plastic bag so that they can carry it and put it in their toter, right? So they just kind of put it all together. That bag in a, in a delivery is considered part of contamination. They don't open the bag to say, okay, those are all fine recyclable materials. They just say, nope, that's a bag, that's solid waste, that goes out, that's contaminated. It's part of calculating their contamination, and I think they're calculating it wrong in terms of by weight instead of by volume, and they don't have a roll-off. So we've got a number of issues, they don't have a roll-off container by which Johns can, can come up and put their material in there that they say is contaminated, because they end up calling these guys back to come and pick it up. And, and so we've got a lot of issues with, with MIRA that I'm talking with Vin, and I've been talking, we're going to meet again tomorrow, we've been on this in terms of saying, you know, do we put them on notice and send the demand notice and letter? We're doing education with the, with the committee, restructuring how they want to do social media, and a bunch of other letters or flyers, talking with Johns about whether or not they get a guy out of the truck, or person, whoever they have, out of the truck, do a surveillance or tail once a week to figure out where the loads are getting rejected and, and try to pinpoint, to do more education, or put the red tag, orange tag, whatever it is, and say, hey, listen, you can't do that. You're putting auto part, spare part, car parts in there, that's contamination. You throw in dog feces in there, that's, that's contamination. You throw a garden hose in there, that's contamination. There's a whole, you know, or hose from a car, auto parts, whatever, may think it's recyclable, it is not, it's getting rejected.
So if you want just a little more insight? It is unfortunate that MIRA has taken a different approach. This recycling hasn't changed in 15 years, we've been delivering the same material, and certainly in the last six weeks, there hasn't been an uptick or a spike in contamination. They're running at the end of their rope. They're passing it forward, and they're trying to take advantage of a situation, because your municipalities, that they can reject it, they definitely lowered the threshold. But we delivered to three other facilities inside the state and haven't had an ounce of contamination at any one of the other facilities. So we're all scratching our head, wondering if it's really contaminated, or if it's a way that MIRA is pushing back against taking the material in, all right? Because their contracts are now in litigation, where they dispose of their recyclables, there's a whole train of litigation behind it. All of that's coming to fruition. MIRA has been less than honest, I think, especially in these manners. Privately, we're dumping, and we don't have a contamination problem. Yet, I pick up residents privately throughout the shoreline at our private subscription, not town contract, and we dump at Essex with that material, and we don't have a problem. How can it be the resident here has no problem, but the resident there does? And exactly what he's saying, if there's a contaminated load, they then require us to come up, drop dumpster, reload it, we literally go across the street and dump recycling into the trash plant, which, you know.
So that goes on our tip and fee again?
And now they put it on your tip and fee. Meanwhile, I'm downtime, it's just a, it's just a bad scenario, and they're not being fair and equitable in any manner. I have never been a pro MIRA guy, and it is going to be interesting to see what happens after the July one date, but I got to be honest with you, don't fear that the place collapses or closes down and there's nowhere to dump. They have contracts outstanding with municipalities till 2027, so they have answering to do to other municipalities, and that trash-to-energy plant will probably not be a disposal site. It'll be more of a transfer station where we bale and rail to landfill. Connecticut's, we're definitely not opening landfills, that's an act of God. Never happened here in our state, we gave it up 20 years ago. So you will see the next generation of waste management turn into rail and bale and send it west. And I think that's where MIRA ends up. Whether it's then, that quasi, or a new entity, that's yet to be determined, but I feel his pain, and I know a lot of other municipalities are going through the same crap, and it is crap, because we didn't change the way we did anything, guys, and we've been doing better at recycling, and more and more material that comes in your home is recyclable and recoverable. It's unfortunate that China and the tariffs that took place, you know, a couple of years back, kind of put a, put a damper on recycling in our country. But you got to think of this, if it was viable to ship it to China, and then to recover it and reproduce materials out of it into new things to ship back and sell to us, then there's got to be a way we handle it here in our country, right? We got to do some sustainable methods, and way bigger than us here tonight. I don't disagree that MIRA may be an opportunity to leave the building, but don't forget, they won't just disappear off the map, and I just don't know why there's no directive of what steps will be taken. Again, they're quasi, very much like an RWA, they don't, they don't really have a board to answer to, they're, they're kind of private, yet public, right? Yet municipal, but yet not, so they don't have to actually say or tell us where we're headed in the future. On that note, us as holders, the only disposal I do with MIRA is literally North Branford. We have seven other sites that we use in the state, and don't fear, if you get out of the MIRA thing, and I am, if we do end up with the contract, we'll be able to handle it, we did it for 10 years prior, we didn't use their services, and there are other disposal sites, legal, legit, and the whole thing, it's just that that's, that group hasn't done it probably proper, and I don't think they're prepared for the future. 60 some odd towns are relying on the next steps from that, you're not the only one, but we have taken this journey before, and as long as we're here, we have places to go, and you don't have to worry about getting rid of our garbage here in North Branford, or recyclables. Like I said, we use three other facilities in the state, and we have yet to get a contaminated load. Okay, it wasn't North Branford stuff, but it's certainly the same comparable material from other residential dwellings, you know? So, but anything else is asked, it'll help.
Thank you. So we don't have much of a choice, right?
No, no, I don't think so. I think it makes perfect sense to opt out now, use it, because the window closes and we opt out and, and, you know, work on the, working through the analysis for the next meeting on, on the award of where we go next, or who we go with for the next couple of years on the, on the garbage contract. But in either case, like Andy just said, they got no problem going it, and All Waste is a big player, they got their own facility. So in either case, we'll, we'll be fine, and it'll be cheaper, because these, these rates on MIRA keep, and they, you know, hammering us on this recycling stuff.
Can I ask one more question? So the whole game of MIRA is keeping in the dark, okay? Private entity gets told one thing, municipalities get told another. And can I ask, what was your alternative after tomorrow? Because I'm wondering, there's some, there are some people getting contracts for another year or two, there are people that don't get contracts, I'm wondering, what was the offer? God forbid you don't opt out tomorrow. What was it, a two-year put or pay? Did they, did they, did any demographics? Sorry, guys, I'm very pertinent to my business, and we can't get answers like this, so I'm dying to know what they told him from the municipality standard, you know? Not that I even care, I won't use them, and I can't, but I just think it's unfair play. Was there an option for you after tomorrow?
Not that I recall.
Just you get on our bus and you pay what we tell you.
Yeah.
It's a bad deal.
Yeah, because they don't, they don't even, they had this big statewide call that they did, that they, you know, that.
And it amounted to nothing.
Right, because they, yeah.
So we sat down with these guys, same manner. State's municipality provide, I mean, we went through the logistics, because we've been hanging around since, you know, 30 years that they've been in, and it's very, that's, that's very poor. I mean, to not have the answers for you and leave you in a position to do or die without an alternative. So, but we are, we can have alternatives, don't worry, we're here, we'll do it and ship it, and I'm sure others can too, I'm not saying just us, but you don't have to have MIRA for the future of garbage, it's small amount that our town has.
What percentage of garbage do they handle of Connecticut, Andy?
Sorry.
Like MIRA, what percentage of garbage do they handle of?
I gotta say.
720,000.
Yeah, 700, it's over 700,000 ton annually, and out of that thing was what, 69 towns or 71 towns?
51 towns.
Remember the municipalities involved in the whole thing at all, from one of your regional council? I don't really think it's 71. There's a lot of towns that are still hanging up in the air.
51 have a contract through 27.
How many?
51 towns.
51 municipalities still have a contract under MIRA until 2027, yet they can't give this guy an answer what he pays next month, or in August.
Well, they, yeah, they got the numbers, but they won't tell you what the future is after 2022, because they're still working through it.
But they still have contracts till 2027. I mean, this is in the paper, this is public knowledge, but there's real no answer team because it's, it's a quasi, I'm just, I'm not anti-Quasi, but sometimes these things don't work out, because it's 12 board members that can hide behind municipal and private and.
Do we have to sign a contract with a different facility?
Well, I'm sorry.
Do we have to sign another contract with a different facility?
Well, as, as we go forward in, in this RFP analysis, in terms of deciding which of the two haulers we go with, then we'll, we'll enter into a contract, and, and then it would be, you know, whether it's All Waste or Johns, figure out where they, where they go and.
Connecticut's, Connecticut's kind of unique. So we led the way in trash-to-energy plants for the nation, right? So the way to get this done was $300 million per plant, we had to run bonds, the legislature, you know, floated bonds, big money, municipality signed on for 20 years, put or pay, you remember all these stories, Guilford sued, you guys remember, this is all, you know, other states, that doesn't exist, your state doesn't run the garbage or Purdue Chicken and tell you who goes where and what. It was really a control mechanism at that time to make sure and ensure the bonds were paid over time. So I guess in theory, great concept, concept, but I think that it fell apart with the quasi, because between government and private, this floating, there was a time when the guy, the director of CRA, which is MIRA, was earning more than the governor's pay and bonus, because nobody dove into those, it happens, you know what I mean? So, yeah, a lot of towns rely on it, but in the regular world, oh, in Indiana, you just hire a hauler and it's his job to get rid of it. So here it's abnormal, because we're so used to being grinded in the process of 20-year put or pay contracts, and they're such, outside Connecticut and some of the New England states, it's not relevant at all that municipal or government oversees garbage. Just saying. It's not new territory, is all I mean.
Thank you.
Hopefully that helped clear it up.
Yeah, thank you. Mike, what do you want to do with this?
Just, you know, just a simple motion to opt out of the MIRA contract and.
Do you have a prepared motion? Or you can watch the.
Just, no, I don't have a prepared motion, just a straight forward motion.
We're going to move that we send notification immediately, terminate our present agreement with MIRA effective July 1, June 30, 2021.
Second.
Michelle, would you get that?
My only question is, I thought it had to be terminated for tomorrow.
Well, no, that's me, I have to bring the letter.
Okay, so it can be with July, all right, so June 30th?
Yeah.
As opposed to July?
Okay, any more discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Would you like the roll call, or?
No, we don't have.
One favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion to adjourn.